Here in Jared's house.
Okay, that's what I thought. Are they not for this anymore, or are they just not here tonight? Who knows?
Hi, Barbara.
You?
Oh, I don't know. We went to Ireland.
Sure, and we go there.
Yeah. It's wet and green.
Wet and cold, huh?
Yeah, wet and cold. We had a good time.
If you like being wet and cold.
Yeah, you know. We adjusted. How did we all get a million dollars, or just me?
Just you.
Just you?
Just me, you know?
Well, Paul has one as well.
Oh, Paul has one too? You have a million dollars?
How do you get that one? I must, I'm a Republican. I didn't get my million dollars.
I'm a Republican. I got mine.
Republican, you give me a million. All righty. Okay, I'm gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order for May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, and first item, we will um have a roll call of the people in attendance.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Rupp?
Here.
Commissioner Blaney?
Present. Present. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the February eighth, two thousand twenty-four minutes as mailed or corrected. Um, I'll entertain a motion um to approve the minutes from February eighth.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Um, any discussion or amendments? Uh, seeing none, then um I'll uh, all those in favor approving the minutes for February eighth say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no, so that motion carries for approval of the February eighth minutes. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comments. Any person may directly address the Planning Commission on any item not on the agenda, or on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to come forward and address the Planning Commission on any item that strikes their fancy? No, seeing none. Um, we will um move on then to the item number four, which is um going to be a fairly, a fairly long and involved discussion for the new general plan amendment pertaining to City of Kingsburg housing element. And um I'm gonna turn this item over to Community Housing, Community Development Director Holly Owen.
I guess I'm Community Housing also. Good evening, Chair Crouper and um members of the Planning Commission, Holly Owen, Community Development Director. Uh, before you tonight, uh, is through a resolution, two thousand twenty-four oh three. Uh, staff is recommending that you recommend to the city council uh, to approve the secret determination, which is an addendum to the City of Kingsburg General Plan E I R for the housing element update, and then recommend to the city council of the City of Kingsburg approval of the general plan amendment, uh, two thousand twenty-four oh one, proposing to amend the city's general plan by inclusion uh, of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand thirty-one housing element as required by state law. So, again, by, uh, required by state law, uh, we've initiated this general plan amendment, uh, and it is related to the adoption and incorporation of the housing element into our, our current general plan. Uh, this is a sixth cycle of, of the housing element. Uh, for those of you who have long memories, uh, we went through a multi-jurisdictional housing element regional effort eight years ago, uh, pretty much the same, same players, thirteen cities, County Fresno, uh, and uh, including the City of Kingsburg, to update our housing elements. Uh, at that time, there were a number of cities who had not updated their, their housing elements at all, or not many, in many years, and so, council of governments, Fresno Council of Governments, uh, spearheaded uh, an initiative and, and partially funded uh, that effort to make that happen, and everybody eight years ago who participated in that was in compliance. You fast forward eight years and we're here again, um, because that is the state mandated uh, term of, of a, a housing element, um, so that we are going uh, through this again uh, with the cities, uh, the thirteen other cities in Fresno, uh, and Fresno County. So, just to, you've got, you've got a voluminous package now, but just to, to break it down a little bit, we have uh, the Kingsburg housing element, it's a single document. Uh, that document uh, is ours, uh, to be included into our general plan, and it's made up of two sections. There's a, a regional body, uh, section, uh, which pertains to all the cities, and then each of us have that, have our own, uh, chapter. So, you, there's a City of Kingsburg chapter that, that outlines specific policies and implementation strategies. Uh, just also to remind you, uh, this is uh, this is uh, something that we need to do in terms of meeting a, a number that we're given by the state called a Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Uh, you have that in your packet, and what we need to do, and what every city needs to do with their, with their RINA number is to show that there are not only uh, no constraints uh, to making uh, that uh, possible, but that there are actual sites available, and that there are policies that uh, help implement that strategy. So, this is a number that's decided at the regional level, those numbers come down from the state. It's a very long process, usually at least a couple of years where we've, everything shakes out, and we finally get a number that we're, that we're assigned. Uh, prior to adopting the housing element, uh, the state law requires that um, the, the state HCD, Housing Community Development, review our draft, make comments, and then give us feedback, uh, as to what else they might be looking for, or uh, changes to text, changes to data, you know, any one, a number of things. So, uh, that happened, uh, with Kingsburg. Kingsburg is probably, I think, maybe is it, we have a third city that has? Third or fourth, uh, fourth maybe. Um, so we were kind of, we've been sort of ahead of the pack, uh, for a while, uh, and in terms of trying to get our, get our document finalized and reviewed by the state. Uh, there was some back and forth, several iterations, and what has resulted is the letter that's in your uh, packet, which is a, a substantial compliance letter, which means you're good to go, just don't change anything, otherwise you take a number and get to the back of the line again. So, that's not to say that, that input isn't, isn't welcome, uh, at, at this point, but the state has officially reviewed the draft document, and so we, uh, hopefully will be uh, bringing this whole process to a close. And that, just so you know, the, the mechanism by which we, uh, we bring this forward into our planning documents is through the general plan. The general plan is also going, uh, undergoing an update, uh, as of this year, but uh, that piece of, the housing element piece of the general plan sort of slides in and out every eight years. So, everything else can stay fairly static. It should, it should be updated, but the one that's actually required by law to be updated, uh, is the housing element. And so, they will, they will just sort of cut and replace, uh, the, you know, they will take out the old housing element, and then this, this new, new and approved one will go into our general plan as a, and that action needs a general plan amendment. And that's why, that's what's, what you're considering here tonight. So, um, the environmental assessment has, has been performed. Um, it is an addendum to, uh, the general plan, E I R. Uh, there was um, a form and, and an analysis that needed to be done, and our consultants did that for us on our, on our behalf, and that is the action also that you are approving tonight. So, I know there's been a lot to look at, uh, just to remind you too, this has been a long process. It started, I believe, in April of two thousand twenty-two, where we authorized our participation in the general plan. Uh, they, I'm sorry, the, the housing element, uh, update, uh, for multi-jurisdictional participation, and then we had workshops in two thousand twenty-three, and then this is, um, the final home stretch here, so. Uh, Amy, uh, Sinsheimer is here tonight. Uh, she is a consultant of for Kingsburg for the housing element update, and uh, we have, do have a brief PowerPoint, and she is here also to answer any general questions you might have. Uh, with the action tonight, it will go on to council as, as soon as their calendar can accommodate us, and ideally, the, the housing element will be adopted, so. That concludes my staff report. Uh, thank you very much for your attention to the voluminous packet, and I'm here to answer any questions.
I, I have a question. I don't know if this relates or not. But we got a letter from a gentleman that was concerned with the crossing, I believe, on the north end of Eighteenth. Uh, does anybody remember that letter? He was concerned because he thought it was dangerous for the children crossing the street, and he thought maybe we could put, change the general plan. I don't know if, you remember that one?
I, 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 I know of the concern, and I know that the Traffic Safety Committee is, is aware of it, and that I think he, that concern has been responded to, and the general plan is, is an overall document that would look at, analyze, at, with our new update, would analyze a number of, of items, including data uh, from traffic and analysis like that. So, at that time, that probably would be, uh, one of many things that would be looked, looked at throughout the city.
I just wondered if he'd gotten a response from him since he wrote to us.
I'm, I'm pretty, I'm certain, but I, he has, but I will, I will check with, with a city engineer.
Okay.
Uh, and let you know.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
I'm assuming after Amy's presentation, we'll go ahead and talk about some specifics in the changes, and recommended changes?
I think she could be, she would be the one to address many of those. Um, I'll do my best to assist, but she is the resident expert in, in the house tonight. So, I'm, I'm gonna probably give, give most of those questions to her, and any other follow-up questions you may have, uh, we certainly can, can research those and, and do that for you too, so. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. Amy?
Good evening. As Holly said, I'm Amy Sinsheimer with Placeworks, and try to be pretty quick here. Holly covered some of the, the stuff already, so, um, mostly just wanna focus on things that have changed in the document, uh, since the last time we came before you, which I believe was about a year ago. So, oops, that was the wrong button. Is there a way to do besides with the arrows? No. Scroll, okay. So, just a overview of what we're gonna talk about. Um, as Holly mentioned, this is an eight-year planning, uh, horizon for this document, so once it's adopted, it'll be another eight years before you update your housing element. Um, this is the graphic that shows the regional and the local appendix and what each one contains. There is a lot to it, as I'm sure you've seen. Um, one thing that I'll note is there's a new chapter or new section in this round of the housing element, and that focuses on fair housing, so uh, that is a whole new analysis that takes the sites that have been identified to accommodate the housing need, and looks at many different factors related to fair housing, and how that interacts with where housing could be built. Uh, just to, gonna get into the details a little bit about what we've done so far. As Holly said, we started out with some outreach. We did some targeted interviews with folks who provide services related to housing, or who are involved in building housing. Uh, we had a couple of meetings with the Planning Commission and the council, and we also had some workshops. And then, for the, about the last year, we've been really working on drafts of the document and getting feedback on those and working with the state. So, the regional housing needs numbers for the whole county are shown here with Kingsburg, um, bolded. It's about two percent of the total for the county. Uh, as Holly said, this is a number that we're required to analyze in the housing element to show that you have land that's zoned to address a variety of housing types at a variety of densities, if a project came forward on those sites. And it's probably the most time-consuming part of, of the work and the back and forth with the state is to get them to, to buy off on the sites that are included to meet that eight hundred and eighty-two, uh, unit number. So, this is in the, the document itself, but this is a table that shows how, uh, that ended up breaking out. The units are divided into what they call income groups or income categories, and there is a way that the state asks us to analyze what types of densities and what types of sites would be suitable for any, you know, household that is one that can be affordable to someone who makes a very low income amount, or extremely low, all the way up to market rate, and it has to do with size and, uh, other things when someone has a special need, um, related to their housing. So, a lot goes into this. Uh, we had vacant sites that met some of the need. We have what we call pipeline projects, where there are actually projects that have been entitled already but not yet built. Those can count, uh, towards your number. We looked at a pending annexation. We also looked at accessory dwelling unit potential. This is something the state has, uh, really been focused on more in recent years, and in fact, it's, we just saw some data the other day. It's one of the biggest growing, um, types of housing unit in California right now in terms of what's actually getting built. So, you're allowed to project based on your historical track record for accessory dwelling units, and we were able to meet the RINA, um, as we see on the far left. And, sorry, I'm defaulting to my PowerPoint brain here. Uh, so then this is just a map of where the various sites ended up. They're fairly dispersed. The yellow is our vacant sites, and the blue is, uh, projects that have been approved. We don't map the accessory dwelling units because they don't exist yet, but, you know, as you probably know, many properties that, that allow residential uses, basically any property that allows residential uses, um, allows accessory dwelling units now under state law, so they can be built in a variety of places.
Question?
Yes.
Is there, for the vacant sites, is there a inventory of the actual sites?
There is.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Is that available to anyone?
Yeah, it's in the document.
Okay.
Uh, I don't remember the table number off the top of my head, but we can look it up.
Okay, doesn't matter.
It's, uh, it's right next, this map is, I think, like, on the page after that table.
Okay.
And there are about, uh, eighty-something, no, a hundred and, a hundred and five sites that are listed there.
And this map actually shows the vacant sites.
Right, the yellow?
The gold, yeah.
Yeah, or gold, yes. Some of them are pretty small on the screen, but hopefully in the, the document, it's a little bigger.
I noticed there's some vacant sites indicated in my neighborhood, but I don't see any vacant lots.
Huh.
How does that work?
Well, if you have some that you are not sure are correct, you could point that out to us. We did vet that, uh, but, yeah, if you are, if you wanna point out some numbers, that'd be helpful.
Okay, I'm just, just north of Stroud, and it looks like, now maybe this is, no, that Madsen is along the edge, right, the dotted line along the edge? And as far as I know, there's no vacant lots on Erling Way, which would be sixty-seven, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-two?
Yeah. If you, if you would, um, if, if you have concerns about particular sites, make, just shoot me an email or make a list, and I will, we will verify that those are indeed, are indeed vacant sites. We did, uh, uh, you know, we did some aerials, and we did also some, some drive-bys, so, uh, these should be, these should be vacant sites, but we will, will, uh, certainly, um, respond to that.
Okay.
If you do that. Okay, thank you.
Hey, I want to put a question on the extremely low, very low, low pipeline project. It shows that there's seventy units. So, that pipeline should be projected on that map, or where would that project be on that map?
The blue section.
So, the blue, there are?
I get that. So, they're all, it looks like they're based on the north.
Six of those, pretty much.
A lot of them are, yeah.
Looks like they all are.
Except, yeah, they're all in northern.
Except for that one, just a little spot.
And there's the one that I believe is part of your agenda tonight. I think that's, that's site one hundred and five, which is not yet approved, but is, you know, something that has some interest.
Is it on here, one oh five?
It is.
Oh, I see it now. I found it, okay.
Okay.
That's south of the strip.
Should I move on? So, since we were, since the draft was first released to the public, there have been quite a few revisions, so that's what we wanted to, to focus on. And a lot of this came from the review from the state. So, they asked for more information about outreach that occurred and how that informed the document, so we did add a table, one H thirty-three. Um, we all, the jurisdictions, I think throughout the county, all received a comment letter from Self-Help Housing, so that is described. Uh, the housing needs assessment, this is that demographic section that has all the, the charts and tables, so we added more information about some of the different, um, characteristics and groups that the state wanted more information on, uh, information about facilities that serve the homeless in the region. So then the sites inventory, which is what we were just talking about on the map, like I said, this was really a big part of the back and forth, so we, um, actually did some things just to, uh, address the way the state likes to do things this time, every time it changes a little bit. So, they wanted, uh, some of the sites that were called pipeline projects moved to the inventory. They wanted more information about, um, the zoning. They wanted to know, you know, what's really realistic for development in terms of track record here, in terms of how many units, even if the density allows twenty units the acre, how many units are actually getting built, uh, on different types of zoned sites? So, sites that allow just residential versus sites that allow non-residential. So, I'm kind of summarizing multiple things that are on the slide, but that was a lot of what we talked with the state about. We ended up needing to reduce the amount of units that we were saying could be met on certain sites based on track record and, and find some other sites so that we could meet the whole RINA. Um, we added new site one hundred and five, since that was something that, um, started to take shape while we were working on the housing element. Um, the accessory dwelling unit potential information was, uh, revised because we had two thousand twenty-three information by the time we were at this point in the process, so that was nice. We also, um, added some more analysis about what is realistic here. Uh, the constraint section, this is where we look at your zoning and we look at other regulations that affect housing development, and again, the, the state wanted some more information about how the Form-Based Code areas work, um, how the mixed-use combining district works, and, and we'll get to the, the rest of this related to the programs, but every time, almost every time there were changes to other parts of the document, which we call the background report section, like in your other general plan elements, it often also meant that some of the actions that the city is committing to would also get updated. So, that is definitely true for some of these. Um, looking at your development standards, parking, height, setbacks, et cetera, how does that all come together to, uh, not constrain housing development? Looking at, uh, how different uses that are really important in state law these days related to housing are allowed for, emergency shelters, trans- transitional and supportive housing, et cetera. Um, and then in the regional sections, we did add some more based on the state's comments, things related to construction costs. Uh, the fair housing section, so like I said, this is where we take a look across the city at whether there's any difference in access to resources, access to education, jobs. It's, it's something I think that was designed for bigger cities. So, Kingsburg really didn't have a lot of issues, um, in this section that the state really picked up on, which was great, and that, that doesn't mean that, that's, you know, I, first of all, I think that means because you don't have a lot of differences in fair housing across your city, uh, but also I think when it's a smaller jurisdiction, it's just not, there's not gonna be, you know, this neighborhood over here is vastly different than this neighborhood over here, at least in my experience so far working around the state. So, they did ask for a little more information. They asked for, uh, some more program, um, things, which we'll get to, but mostly it was just, uh, tell us a little more about, you know, the options for transit in the county. Oops, oh geez.
Good job.
Oh my gosh. That's just to make sure everyone's still watching. Okay. Um, yeah, I think this, we already covered. So then, we get into the real implementation piece of your document, the programs section, and we did make changes there. Uh, so, they wanted to see maximum building height be, um, higher in the highway commercial district to address constraints. They wanted to see, um, more information about the pending annexations. A couple additional actions to partner with folks to preserve existing affordable housing, make sure that's happening. Uh, making sure that pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans are made available, which was already planned on by the city, but wasn't called out enough at that point. Uh, so Program sixteen, we have a later slide on. This is one of the bigger things that came out of the kind of final back and forth with the state. This is where we didn't have enough, uh, sites that already had suitable zoning to address the RINA. So, we worked with staff and the state to get their approval of, uh, a set of sites that would, could be upzoned to address that need, so we'll get into this in a couple of slides in the details. Uh, we have some additional monitoring of fees to make sure those aren't posing as a constraint moving forward, uh, working on objective design standards and how that relates to the MXU district. And then Programs thirty and thirty-one, actually thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two, all relate to the fair housing analysis. So, uh, Program thirty was in the first draft. Programs thirty-one and thirty-two were added during the review with the state, and these all are actions that are going to be taken or are already ongoing to address, um, access to resources. Ways to encourage different types of housing so that there are different options for housing, uh, that someone might wanna move to a different type of house, for example, to do some things to zoning to help with that. So, then this is just kind of a laundry list of all the other programs where they wanted little tweaks to either the timeframe, when they would be implemented, or the objectives that are in each program. And so, once a year, the city and all cities and counties are required to report on the implementation of the programs to the state, and this is kind of how they track that. As you said, you would do this during this timeframe. You said you would try to achieve X, Y, and Z. It's kind of a new era with the state in terms of how they actually enforce that or not. In the past, it's really been, you know, do your best, and so, we'll see how that goes. One thing that they will do when they, once you adopt the housing element and have a final letter from the state saying you're in compliance, they will put the programs that are most important to them in that letter. So, that will allow the city and you, as one of the, um, bodies, to kind of track what they think is most critical. That's something they've been doing lately. Okay, and I'll pause. Are any, any questions on everything so far? There's a lot there.
Yeah. There was, under Program five, they revised the maximum building height from thirty-five feet to fifty feet. Does that take into account of the fact that we'd have to upgrade our fire department equipment? A fifty-foot building is like a four-story or a higher building. Our equipment, at this point in time, would be really stretched to go ahead and fight a a fire on a four-story building.
Yeah, I don't believe we, I have had that discussion on many housing elements. I don't think that came up with our discussions.
And I realize that that doesn't mean that, that people will build four- and five-story buildings out of, just because they can, uh, because if it doesn't make economic sense, it doesn't, but, are those kinds of considerations even discussed with the Department of Housing?
I have, I have had those discussions with them. I just did with another city recently. Um, so, again, I, I think at this point, it's a comment that we can talk with staff about and, and see if there's anything that should be done further. Uh, it's a program to do that zoning change. It's not, you know, it hasn't already happened, so, yeah. But that is a concern I've heard many times.
Because unfortunately, the, one of the problems that we have with the state of California in all forms of government is they're not realistic for a small municipality like ourself, and I mean, not only us, but all up and down the Central Valley.
Right, yeah. I work in a lot of rural, more rural parts of the state, and it is a concern. I can't speak for them, this was something that they asked for to make sure that, you know, the density would actually work, that's been implied to that, that is part of your general plan already. So I think, I don't know, Holly, if you want to say anything, but I would say because you're working on your general plan right now, that's a good thing, and you can think about some of these programs in the context of the entire land use element in the general plan, rather than just the housing element.
Okay.
Where you're looking at all the, all the pieces.
I just, I just didn't know if there's a way to go ahead and provide feedback to them to say, this is nice idealistically, but it doesn't work in the real world.
We can definitely share my experiences, that they don't always, they kind of want what they want.
Okay.
In order to achieve, you know, when they see that they don't think the density can be achieved without certain development standards changing, that's their priority. But yeah, we can, we can talk more about that.
You mentioned the reports for the programs?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know who's going to be making those reports? Is the city staff, or you've been?
Yeah, it's the city staff, I don't know.
Annually.
Yeah.
City staff, okay.
And the progress report.
They got time for that?
No. Yes, of course I did.
It's a public forum, yes.
Yes, of course. It's required.
So I'll just, I think we're close to the end here, so thank you for bearing with me. So Program sixteen, as we said, this was the program that we've now included in order to get you to the number, to the RINA number, in your housing element analysis, and so what we worked with staff on and the state was to propose to change the general plan designation and zoning, I believe on all five of the parcels that are listed here, and so these would need to have, in order to meet state laws, which is very prescriptive for this part of the work, you would need to apply a minimum density of twenty dwelling units the acre and a maximum of twenty-five dwelling units the acre, and these would be for residential uses. So these are all sites that are vacant, that are suitable for housing, and there is a tight deadline on this to complete the zoning work by the end of this year, so this was a bit of a negotiation that we went through towards the end.
What's the nexus between these designated sites and the property owner? Does the property owner have restrictions on what could be built, who you can sell it to, or?
What's on the screen is basically the densities that need to be put into place are the most prescriptive thing, there is no restriction on selling or even what type of project needs to happen besides that it needs to be residential.
Okay. I guess one of the points Paul is making is what this is doing is if you take Site forty-seven, which is the bottom of Stroud and Cam, or Stroud and, I think that's probably Tenth, you're saying, okay, you're going to have to have at least twenty units per acre as a minimum?
That is what the law says, yeah.
What that's doing is that is going ahead and taking first private property and changing its value tremendously, because that, that site is directly across from Rayford Johnson School. The convalescence center is on the right-hand side of it, there's a single-family housing development on the left-hand side of it, and north of that site are a bunch of single-family homes. So what the state in effect is doing, if we have to go ahead and play with this, the state is going ahead and taking property without compensation from a private property owner.
I'm not really qualified to speak to that, but I don't know if any of you want to respond or not.
That's got to be considered in our, I would think, I mean, because what you're, what you're doing is saying we have to go ahead and change our zoning for Site number forty-seven.
We're, we're, we're upzoning, so it is already zoned multifamily.
Right.
So it is increasing the density, and one could argue on either side, that either this, this is an opportunity for developers, or, you know, or a limitation, and, you know, if somebody wanted to take that and, you know, we, by this action, you know, we will create, you know, a different category of zoning and allow for greater number of units, ideally not sacrificing standards, there'll be objective standards that would be applied, but, you know, if somebody decided to take this to the next level and, you know, file a lawsuit or something with the state, then that would be, you know, a new, a new case, I'm sure. We are not the only city that this has been asked of, not in the Central Valley, and certainly not in the state. So upzoning is, is a way for, you know, a way for the state to meet these expectations of numbers, and you could say that that, in an ideal world, may preserve some more open space, create density in one area, and, you know, leave farmland for best and highest use. So yes, I hear what you're saying about this, but this is, you know, this, these are, these property owners will, there will be a rezone, so they will, they will be informed of it, and they already, they already know that they, they have multifamily, you know, as a designation.
If we, if this goes in place, would the property owner have the right to go ahead and put in less than twenty dwelling units per acre?
I don't think so.
Not if I read that slide right.
Well, I bet, but they don't, you know, they, they don't necessarily have that right now, if it's, I mean, I get, you know, we do have a single-family designation on some multifamily units, but lately, it seems like the market has, has been most interested in greater density and multifamily. That may just be financials for the day, but I think that that also speaks to demand, not only just here, but statewide.
With that said, what Bruce just asked you is if I have an acre, and this says apply a minimum density of twenty basic dwellings per acre, that's what I'm going to be restricted to?
And a maximum of twenty-five, yes.
So, and, and this is not, this is not something the city chose, this is in state law, when you don't have enough land that's already zoned to meet the RINA, which is what the state, when they reviewed the document, said was what they were seeing, based on the analysis, then this part of the law kicks in that says you have to upzone or rezone, you know, enough sites to meet that number, and they have to have this minimum density placed on them and only allow residential. So it's right out of the law, and it's not something that, you know, the folks who are working with at the state or us could debate. The higher density was something we worked with them on, the maximum, but the minimum is in the law.
And this is something too, that's a good general plan update discussion, and it is coming to us in the next year about growth, about density, about annexations, and how we want the city to accommodate new, new types of housing. We have, we have definitely encouraged single-family residential, I think for the most part here, we have, we have multifamily too, but this gives us all an opportunity to step back and consider where, where we want to go in the future.
And that discussion will be in light of what this is saying?
Well, it will, it will be, it will, this will certainly be a factor, yes, because this will be, this will have been a rezone that's required for us.
So has Kingsburg been out of compliance because of how they're building their homes and stuff? Have they, have they been staying close to what the standards, you know, have been?
We have met our, our previous RINA numbers, and this is, every eight years you get a new, you know, no, we are, we are in compliance, and, you know, I think that you could argue that perhaps we have, we, the market has rewarded single-family residential construction in this, and it's an appealing town, people, people desire it, people will probably be willing to pay money to live here, so the developers have, have answered in response to that. I will also say, though, that the last three or four inquiries I've had recently, they're all looking for multifamily opportunities. And we have, and then we also have single-family subdivisions that are, that have been, you know, in, in, let's just say, they've, they've fallen off by the wayside and they're getting picked up, and they're, they're, they're being looked at also, not for multifamily necessarily, just for, to finish those off. So we still, we still have a lot of interest in housing here, we just, you know, and we want, we have a brand and that we, is valuable, we want to protect, but we, we do need to do it in conjunction with what is now state law. A further discussion, and it will be, it will take us the better part of a year for that discussion too, I know, with the general plan update.
Yeah, I'll just say, overall, I'm sure it's been publicized quite a bit, but the housing crisis, the way the state is dealing with this is buy more of the stick than the carrot than they used to, and most places aren't building as much housing as they think needs to be built, so that is part of why, you know, this kind of program is in a lot of housing elements now. But as Holly said, your general plan, your land use element is your opportunity to give it more of your local polish, and hopefully then you can move forward, you know, to your next housing element, having what you want in place in order to meet the numbers, and we don't know what the numbers will be next time. So far, in the places I'm working on the seventh cycle, they're lower, we will see. This was the biggest set of numbers ever, two and a half million units across the state for this cycle, which is a really tall order. So just to wrap up, we, Holly already talked about the proposed environmental review that's before you, which is an addendum to the general plan EIR, and we are here on May ninth, we don't have a date yet for the council adoption, and we put a tentative date on here, and then after the housing element is adopted, it does get submitted to the state for one final review, and I mentioned that at the end of that time, because you already have what's called this conditional certification letter, you would receive a final letter that says you're good to go for, you know, the next eight years. So here's the recommendation that Holly mentioned, that's in your packet. That's it, and we're happy to take more questions.
Can I ask a question? Getting back to our Program sixteen, do we have to have a minimum number in that program?
The minimum density number?
Yes.
It is required by the state law?
It is required.
It is. It could be higher than twenty units per acre, but yeah, it needs to be at least twenty units per acre. Would you like me to stay up here for questions? Do you want to have discussion? I don't know what you guys.
Well, we're moving into the commission discussion section, any more questions for our housing element consultant? No?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, and then open it for public comment. Anybody on the commission want to discuss this in more detail? Thank you very much for that. All right, I don't hear any burning desire for more discussion.
Not for more discussion. The way, the way I see it, we're kind of locked, locked into it, we can't, really not much we can do, it's kind of being mandated by the state, and we're being force-fed, you know, this, this program.
Yeah, my, my personal feeling about the increased density is I'm not afraid of it, it just has to be designed properly. If you have increased-density housing, if it's designed properly so that it doesn't look like increased-density housing, then it's, it becomes very acceptable, and that can be done, you just need to have designers and architects and contractors that know how to do that properly. You can make it look ugly, there's lots of examples of that, and you can make it look nice, concentrated-density housing. So I'm, I'm not afraid of it, it's just, what I'm afraid of is getting somebody who doesn't know how to design it properly, or doesn't put any visual aesthetics into a multifamily development that makes it look bad, then, then you regret it, but if it's designed properly, it's just, it's, it's, it's not what sort of I'm looking for, obtrusive? Is that a good word? So that's my concern, it's just, if somebody's going to put up multifamily, we need to be, it's the same thing with the ADUs, make them look nice, make them fit in with the other architecture and the other elevations, and they don't become a problem, and that's part of our responsibility and part of the city council's responsibility. We have the option to be able to place some design elements, restrictions on these, on these constructions, these multifamily, and we need to exercise that option, but it takes a little effort.
I think, Paul, before you, I mean, you leave that, granted, you make a good point about the design of the housing itself, I think my biggest concern is this is pushing us into an infill situation where we're having to build a lot of houses on smaller houses on smaller lots, and the infrastructure intact that would happen to the city of Kingsburg.
Oddly enough, I've talked to people in the education system, in the schools, and they're unhappy because with all these new houses that are going in, there's no kids coming, there's no new young families coming, and there's no starter families buying these half-a-million-dollar homes, and the edu, and, and I think the census of students in the schools is actually static or going down, even though we have a lot of residential development, that's the last I ever, I don't know if that's still true, but I have heard that from teachers, saying there's a concern because with more development, there should be more kids coming into the school, and there's just not. So, and I asked why, and they said, well, a lot of these people buying the new homes are older folks, established, that don't have young families, that the parents with young families can't afford these homes. So if you talk about infrastructure as far as the schools go, they're not going to be adverse to more young families coming in, as far as I know, because that brings in more students to the schools. The other thing with the infrastructure is, there's a lot of kids that are born and raised in Kingsburg can't afford to live here, they grow up here in family homes in Kingsburg, and they can't afford to buy their own home here, and they move out of town, so, and that's, and that's a disappointing situation for a lot of families. I know my kids won't be buying homes here. So the smaller homes gives more opportunity for people who can't afford six-hundred-thousand-dollar home to come to Kingsburg and live here, which is, like you said, a very attractive town, and we should, those people in the low-income or moderate-income section of life should, should have an opportunity to come here, so, there's different ways to look at it.
My concern with this, specifically with Program sixteen, is by, what's your term? Upzoning it? By upzoning it, what you're doing is if you've got an acre, like forty-three thousand five-hundred feet, if I remember correctly, what you're going to do is, if you're going to go ahead and put any green space on that at all, and have twenty homes, or twenty dwelling units of, say, fifteen hundred square feet apiece, there are going to have to be at least two stories, and to make it so there's some amenities to the situation, including parking and... to the situation, including parking and that size kind of stuff. Then you're looking at three-story apartment buildings, minimum, to make it work. And to have, like I say, parking, have aesthetics, all that kind of stuff. Because at 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit, 29, if you covered every square foot of that acre with a dwelling unit, you can only put 29 dwelling units on it. So to go ahead and say that you're going to have a 1,500 square foot apartment, you're going to have to be at least two stories so that you can have another 1,500 feet for your garage, for your streets, for whatever it happens to be. So what, what we're looking at is, is forcing these parcels to be two and three-story or larger buildings. And a three-story apartment complex is pretty intimidating. That's, that's the only concern I've got, is that I think we are doing, by going ahead and going along with this and including specific parcels, that we are taking away the rights of the property owners to decide what they want to do with their property. That's my concern.
But we're being mandated. I mean, what can we do?
That, quite frankly, is where we have to go ahead and look at seeing if we can spread these things out or going ahead and changing, um, some of our, put more duplexes and triplexes out. And I realize this, a lot of it's economics. So like you say, if our hands are tied, our hands are tied. But that's just something I think that we need to go ahead and convey. And I trust council is hearing this concern and convey back upstream.
That's right. We have a city council member here.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've said this numerous times over, over the past couple of years. I really think these new residential developments with these single-family homes wouldn't be hurt if they were mandated to put in a couple of duplexes or triplexes as part of their development. Even 10%, 15%, 20% or something like that. A small amount of their, of their single-family lots, uh, switched over to duplexes. And they could construct duplexes and triplexes now where it looks like one house. They really are aesthetically pleasing. But a, as I've discovered over the past few years, the developers are not going to do this on their own. They will not. They don't want to. It has to be mandated, so. I think it should be discussed at the city council level to, to, you know, put it in the zoning and mandate. If somebody's putting up 20 or 30 single-family units, they need to put up two or three duplexes or triplexes as part of it. Then it'll get done. It's mandated, it'll get done, otherwise they'll never do it.
All right. Where are we at here? Commission discussion? All right, so let's open it for public comment. So I'm going to open for public comment this item on the agenda. If there's any member of the public that wishes to come forward and make any comment on this particular item, you are welcome to do that now. I don't see anybody rushing forward for that opportunity. So I'll go ahead and close the, no, uh, bring it back for continued commission discussion before we close the public comment. Any more discussion or questions for the con, consultant on this particular issue, item? No? Okay, then, uh, we'll close the public comment section. Plausible actions. Recommend that city council approve the sequoet determination and amend, an addendum to the city Kingsburg general plan EIR. The second one is to recommend to the city council approval of the general plan amendment, proposing to amend the city's general plan. Mr. Nolan, can we do this in one motion or do we have to do it in two?
We should do it in two.
Okay. So I'll, um, entertain a motion to recommend, for number one, recommend that the city council approve the sequoet determination and addendum to the city council general plan EIR.
I will make a motion to approve sequoet determination.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to, um, recommend the city council approve sequoet. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, uh, that motion carries for item number one. Item number two, recommend to the city council approval of the general plan amendment, proposing to amend the city's general plan by inclusion of, inclusion of the housing element. I'll entertain a motion, um, on that, entertain a motion to proceed with recommending to the city council on that item.
I make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval, approval of the general plan amendment, proposing to amend the city's general plan by inclusion of the housing element.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and recommend the city council approve item number two. Um, is there any amendments or discussion on that? Um, seeing none, then, all in favor of recommending to the city council approval of the general plan amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. So item number two is carried.
I would like to abstain.
We have an abstention from item number two?
Yes.
From item number two. Um, so we'll do a voice vote. Um, all in favor of recommending to the city council item number two, that they approve the general plan amendment. Mr. Gonzalez, you're in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Barbara?
Yes, aye.
I'm an aye. Craig?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Okay, okay. So the motion carries with one abstention. All right, that's it then. Um, we will, thank you very much for, that was a very good presentation. I'm glad you didn't read the whole thing.
Excuse me, Paul.
Yeah, I know.
Paul, I'm, I'm in need of a restroom break.
Okay, we'll take a short break. Five minutes, and then we'll come back.
I realize our hands are tied by state law.
Yeah.
Now, for those of you who have been around for a while, I think I've mentioned that with the first item. The second item, those of you who've been around for a while, uh, recall, uh, the allocation process. There's a rating and ranking, uh, that, that happens after an application is submitted. Council will, uh, if they so desire, open allocations annually or biannually, or they may even skip a year if there are no, um, no applications that are received. Uh, this, uh, was opened up, uh, in the spring for allocations. And the applicant, uh, AMG and Associates, uh, has been in discussions with the city since, uh, last year about their, uh, proposed project. Just so you know, uh, the, the map is in your packet, but it is the, it's property that was previously considered for the Twin Palms Retirement Community over by Nelson's Hardware. That's the, the property in question. Uh, so just to review, the growth management system was, uh, a, a ballot initiative and, uh, well, voted in, um, by the residents of Kingsburg in November 2004. Uh, it, it was the result of concerns about unchecked and, and rapid development that was not perhaps reviewed in the way that the citizens wanted to see. Uh, the growth management system provides for a certain number of units, 115 housing unit allocations per year, 80 single-family and 35 multifamily to be made available. Uh, as, uh, described in, in the, that section, there is a, a particular process that's followed with a rating and ranking criteria. That's also in the, uh, growth management ordinance. Um, so, um, it is a transparent process. Everyone knows what they're, how they're being, they're being assessed. Uh, and that was, uh, a use of a hundred-point scoring system. And a number of criteria, uh, are, uh, are in play as, uh, projects are analyzed. This, uh, project, uh, is a multifamily unit project. So what is before you tonight is strictly an allocation action. The approval of, review and approval of, of the allocations that are, are currently being proposed to be given for this project. This is not a site plan review or a planned unit development. That will come later. Uh, and they are, um, they will be going to site plan review in the very near future. They made a few minor modifications to their, to their site map. Uh, and, uh, we are planning to, uh, to see them for that process soon. And then you will, uh, then you will be, uh, given the opportunity to comment on, on particular aspects of the project. Uh, the, uh, allocation units for senior housing has a special section in the growth management ordinance. Uh, you might look at it as sort of a discounting of, uh, allocation units. So if you come in as a senior, um, project and if you make some of that affordable, you get more credit, more or less, for your allocation unit. So that's how you get a 99-unit, um, project that it, that translates to a quarter, um, of the allocation unit per, per housing unit. So you get, uh, 25 units, if that, if that makes sense. So, um, so that was, that analysis was done. There is, uh, environmental review, uh, but it's not, uh, it is not a project. So it doesn't result in, in a kind of environmental, um, impacts at this point. Uh, so there are no, um, there's no, uh, sequoet that's required. Uh, all the projects that are submitted to the city for land use entitlements will, will be subject to, to any environmental assessments, uh, at that time. So at this, uh, point, uh, if you, there are, worth some reading to be done. Uh, the, uh, representative for the applicant is here tonight to answer any question, particular questions about the allocation process or just some general questions about the project. But again, I encourage you to, that, that's what's before you tonight is, is an allocation action only and that you will have, um, an opportunity to ask more specific questions, um, when, when it comes to you for planned unit development. Uh, the action, uh, is that you, uh, recommend that the city council approve the environmental determination and, uh, recommend that the city council award the 25 housing unit, um, allocations for 99 units of housing. This concludes my staff report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Educate me a little more on what you said, when it comes to us.
It, it will be processed as a planned unit development, much like, uh, Linnea Villas was, I believe, but certainly like Marion Villas was. So you will see the elevations, the, the lay, the, the general layout on, on that acreage, circulation, um, and, you know, open space or other amenities. And then that will be, um, that will be coming to you for, for review and approval after site plan review.
So the next time we see this, it will come to us as a final map for approval?
You will, you will be, uh, you will certainly be allowed to add conditions at that time if you, if, if that is, uh, appropriate. And that will be, you know, your chance to, to look at it and, and, much like, uh, the Soho project or other projects that you have seen in the past. Where they're, they're bigger residential projects.
No, I'm confused. So I'll go back to my question. So the next time we see this, it'll be coming to us for final approval, for site plan review?
No. No.
It will come to you as a planned unit development, P and P.
Yes.
And so you'll have the environmental review with regards to P and P. And you'll have the P and P, so it'll be, it'll be the project in the form of a plan you could develop. But the site plan will be determined by staff and site plan review. And then it will come to you as a, as a B.
As a planned unit development? So, then, so then we'll be seeing it again after that meeting?
No, that will be your meeting. That will, that will be, you know, the action that you will be asked to take is to review the planned unit development, comment on it.
And approve.
And look at the conditions of approval. And at that point, if there are any that need to be discussed, that's where that will happen.
That opens a door for discussion I had many times over the years. I would like the opportunity for the planning commission to be able to look at these things and make comments on these things before it comes to us for final approval. Something similar to what site plan gets to do as many times as they want. They get to go over these projects, review them, make comments, suggest changes. And I said, there's no limit to the number of times they get to review this before it comes to us for approval. I don't care for that process, really. I think the planning commission is useful enough that we could look at this, make some suggestions on what changes should be made, and then maybe take it back to site plan review with our suggestions. I would like to see the planning commission be able to do some, what is it? Oh, planning, where we get to actually look at it and get involved in the planning process rather than have it come to us for final approval when we can't make any changes at all or even suggest any changes. We can only do a quasi-judicial, legal evaluation of what's already been decided. So, am I kind of getting a point across that? And it doesn't just go for this one. It goes for the, I might be the only one on the planning commission that actually wants this. It also goes for these residential developments that are coming in. So, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
We're out of the process. We're blocked out of the process. We're blocked out of the evaluation process, the conceptual map process, which we have done in the past and been involved in. I know that, that big project down on, the Tolari County project.
The Summerlin, the Hash.
Yeah, we were able to, they had public meetings and we were able to go to the meetings and, you know, provide some input. So, that's my complaint. Is we don't get to see this again. We will see it tonight. We're probably not allowed to do a lot of discussion because, as you said, we're here for the allocation process, period. So, there won't be a lot of discussion on our part. And there won't be any more discussion because it'll come to us for final review. And that's my complaint.
I have to agree. I think we should do a look at it ahead of time.
Well, to take the position that we need to micromanage projects as they come in tends to discourage any developer from approaching the city. If we go ahead, and which we have done, is we have set up a series of requirements that we make staff well aware with the North Kingsburg specific plan and have those concrete defined requirements laid out so that when a developer comes in and the developer says, "I want to bring in a housing complex and it's going to have 300 units to it on five acres," the staff goes ahead and says, "That doesn't meet our requirements." Or if a developer comes in and says, "I want to put it in a 20-acre subdivision and I don't want to put any alleys in," that doesn't meet our requirements. So, we have delegated to staff to go ahead and act according to what we have directed in our planning documents, in our specifics in the way of, so that it provides the developer some certainty with what he's getting into. And it eliminates a lot of the back-and-forth meetings. Do you remember the meetings with, what was the meeting at the, where the developer came in with, on 10th? That he came in and he wanted like 75 units on, but he didn't want to move his house? And all that kind of stuff? And how many back-and-forth meetings we had to go through? If staff had said, "No."
Excuse me, I have to interject because you got that wrong. That project went to site plan review. There was a conflict, as far as I know, between the developer and the owner with site plan review. And he asked that it be sent to us to do a review of it.
And we rejected it because it didn't conform.
He asked, well, I don't think we rejected it. We worked with the owner to bring it up to whatever, whatever we needed. He asked the city to send that to us because he couldn't get along with site plan review. That's the only reason it came to us.
Okay.
So, the back-and-forth that you're complaining about that went on had to go on because he didn't want to deal with site plan review. And if I'm wrong about that, then please let me know. But I'm pretty sure that's the way it went. So, the back-and-forth was necessary.
But that's the reason why staff, we give staff these requirements so that we don't have to deal with these kind of things.
Not be wrong again. We did have to deal with that because staff, he didn't want to deal with staff. He came to deal with us. And that back-and-forth went on for about three months. And we did an excellent job, by the way, of working with the developer to draft that project. So, I don't know what your, what your criticism here with that project is. It doesn't make sense to me.
Excuse me. These are discussions that you can have as part of your meeting after, but these discussions are not part of the agenda. So, I would suggest to you that you proceed with the matter at hand.
Okay.
And, but you certainly, as the commission, can have workshops or you can have your next commission meeting. You can ask Holly to put on the agenda. The majority of the commission requests to talk about these issues. But, you know, those, the cycle of process is set forth in the municipal code. And so, those are issues as the planning agency. You may want to further consider and make recommendations to the city council.
Thank you.
With regards to the process. But right now, they're set forth in the municipal code and Holly and her department. The planning commission and the city council must comply with the procedure that is set forth in the municipal code.
All right. Thank you for getting us back on track. So, is there any more commission discussion on Holly's presentation?
I have a quick comment on this discussion. Any member of the, any citizen in Kingsburg can go to those site plan committee meetings. And you can make, you can voice your opinion on what you think about new development, whether it's homes or multifamily. So, any one, not only you guys on the planning commission, any member of the community. And, you know, they can put their two cents in on what they feel, how these things should look or, you know, the process.
Do you think that includes planning commission members?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're a citizen.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
No, because if it's coming before the.
Especially the public hearing, then they can't be, they can't be involved in, they can't be involved in those matters that have come before the public hearing because that may prejudice their position with regards to it. And then the developer may say, "Well, Holly, you know, Dr. Cooper is making all these requirements of site plan. And then, so does that mean if we don't do the site plan, is he going to object or go against the project?" So, he's got to be very careful or aware of that. Yeah, we could guard the content. Site plan review is staff, because we have fire department, police department, public works, all the departments to be involved and have to make sure that it's planned appropriately. And then it comes for the P and P or the C and P or whatever, or the track map before the planning agency, which is the better.
I will say too that all, all conditions that arise out of site plan review are reviewed by the planning commission. And I certainly have been involved in situations where conditions were added. I think that's, if it's within that scope of work, that's, you know, that is, that's why we have a city attorney here to make sure that we stay in the lanes. But I, you know, I've been involved with that too. So, all those, all those conditions arise out of, you know, you're right, more than one meeting usually.
So, indulge me, Mr. Nolan, for one second. When I came to Kingsburg 30 years ago, the planning commission used to meet in this room with the actual developer sitting in the crowd. And the planning commission would have meeting after meeting, month after month, negotiating back and forth with the developer sitting in the crowd with the planning commission back and forth until they hammered out an agreement. And then, and then the planning commission would vote on it. In other words, the planning commission at that time was, the city council had nothing to do with it. There was no site plan review. The planning commission would work arm-in-arm or hand-in-hand or face-to-face with the developer in this room, month after month. And when they were happy with the final plan, that they had, you know, worked out with the developer in the same room intimately, then they voted on it. So, I'm confused. I'm going to do more.
That's not the process anymore.
Yeah. So, I'm going to do some research. I'm going to call some other planning commissioners of the cities and find out if they are allowed to have any kind of exposure or education or review of any project that comes in before it comes to them for final approval. I got to educate myself on this. All right. So, commission discussion. No more commission discussion?
Nope.
Open for public comment? Any public, any members of the public have any comment on this particular project? Seeing none. Bring it back, continued commission discussion. Nothing? Can I ask a question? No. In the packet, there were some conceptual elevations and site layout and such. That is all to be considered later, correct?
Yes, that's part of the, it'll come to you as part of the P and P.
We can ask questions about that at a future meeting.
Right. And if you recall, in other allocation applications, sometimes the conceptuals, you know, they, they, the number of units usually don't change because by the ordinance, you know, they can't go up. They can go down. But in terms of how it sits on the parcel, sometimes that, that changes. So, they are only required with allocation application to have a conceptual and a project description, number of units, that kind of thing.
Can I ask one further question? I understand the applicant's representative. Why 99? Why not 100?
Jacob Saruti, he's with AMG and Associates.
Hi. Honestly, that's a great question. And I don't even know the answer to that question. I mean, I think my, just how they kind of structured it, how it all fits, you know, it fits better that way for some reason, I don't really know. I mean, I don't really design it myself. We have, you know, we have an ass architect.
I just wondered, is like 100, if you go have 100 units or more, does that throw you into a different set of regulations? Subject to environmental or, I mean, subject to state health department or something?
No.
Okay.
I know, it's weird. It's funny.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks. Yeah, any more questions, I'm here to answer them.
Just a quick one.
Sure.
Timeline that parcel's been sitting for a very, very long time, so.
I know, I know. So, we got involved in this, so as she was saying, I believe it was some kind of Twin Palms. The plan through that, that was the thing a few years ago. Then we got involved some point last year. The current owners is, I think it is the, it's actually the, the Housing Authority for Two R owns it. So, we've been in talks with them and, you know, they're totally supportive of this project. So, we, assuming that we get everything going, you know, per plan, we get the allocations and site plan review. As planned, we should be breaking ground to some point, I want to say like fall of next year.
Okay.
Maybe summer. It depends on when we get, when we get funding. But usually about a year or two, maybe a year and a few months.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
So, are these going to be individual units that are seniors? Or are they, are they going to be duplexes or?
It's buildings. So, if, I think if you want to see the actual site plan, you just see an idea of it. It's just buildings and each building has, you know, it's like 30 units in it or actually a bit less, actually.
So, is it enclosed or are the units enclosed into a central hallway?
Yeah, yeah. So, there's corridors and breezeways and all that kind of stuff too. So, it's, I mean, but it's very spread out though.
It's a big apartment, it's three stories.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's, there's plenty of open space. And, you know, we have onsite, we have a bocce ball court. We have a garden that everyone can use and all that kind of stuff.
But this is for seniors?
Yes, for seniors.
Not low-income?
No, it's for seniors. They have to be above 62 to live there.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, you don't qualify.
I wish.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, this doesn't qualify as a low-income, is it a moderate, low or very low?
So, it's, it's, it's not just low-income. It's spread across different various categories. But, you know, but again, it's, it's considered a senior project. Whenever we apply for funding, it's a senior project. We, they don't put us in categories low-income for when we apply for it.
Brings up a question then. Holly, do you know if any of these units are going to help us qualify for the minimum required units for low, medium, low, or very low?
That, that certainly was part of the, part of the project description. So, I'm assuming that that has not changed.
Okay.
We will work out these details.
So, what you're saying is it will help us qualify?
Yes, it will qualify.
Okay. One other question. What is on the boundaries of this piece of property? What's on the boundary?
I, I believe there's an area, there's a very tiny area over there, but I think it's Packaging Corporation of America. There's a well to the west.
And they're single-family home to the north.
And then there's a single-family. And there is also.
Well, there's the Nelson's Hardware.
There's Nelson's Hardware.
Does this butt up to the?
The south.
Does this butt up to the dog park?
No, no. This is just north of Nelson's Hardware.
Yeah, I know where it is. I just couldn't remember where the dog park is.
No, the dog park is further, further to the west.
Oh, okay.
So, on the north is just, that's just open, open land?
No, it's a single-family home. There's a holding pond behind that.
Yeah. Oh, so this property butts up against the holding pond?
To the, on the north side, yeah.
See that little notch? That notch is the holding pond.
Yeah, I think it's a well.
And there's a city well there.
And it could be a well there as well.
So, yeah, this, this, I mean, the one, this has been a site that's been identified for housing for a long time. It is, you know, certainly within walkable distance to Save Mart and the shopping plaza there. It really should do.
What's the white area?
That's Packaging Corporation of America.
Oh, that big building?
Mm-hmm. PCA.
So, is there going to be a north-south road between those two?
I don't believe so.
So, we're talking about this?
Although we're talking about things, about, about the aspects of the site, site plan that I haven't, I am not familiar with yet, so.
Oh, yeah. Getting back, getting back to allocations.
We ready for the motion?
Okay. So, any, public comment will be closed. Possible actions. F1, recommend the city council approve the environmental determination that the award of housing units is not a project under SEQA, is not a project under SEQA. So, I entertain a motion to recommend the city council that the awarding of these housing units is not a project under SEQA. Do you entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend the city council approve their environmental determination that the award of housing units is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or amendments? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion that recommend the city council that the award of housing units is not a project under SEQA? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say, or all opposed, say no. All right then, that's carried. Motion carried. Move on to number two. Recommend the city council award 25 housing allocation units for 99 units of senior affordable housing. I'll entertain a motion to recommend the city council award these housing units. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion?
For the city council, 25 housing units.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second for item number two. Any question, any discussion on the motion or amendments? None. All in favor of recommending the city council award 25 housing units for 99 units of senior affordable housing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, that motion carries. Future items. Well, um. I, uh, excuse me. I would like to petition, um, at some point, the members of the planning commission who would be interested in spending more time on these projects, reviewing them before they come to us for a final vote. My, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Blaney, has no interest in doing that. So, um.
I didn't say I didn't have any interest in it. I just said.
What's your sound like?
That's not our procedure at this point in time.
Okay. Does that mean you have an interest in discussing these projects? Um, at having the planning commission look at these projects and make recommendations before it comes to us for a final vote?
It means I have an interest in defining and making sure we all understand the procedure for having projects come to us.
Oh my God, sounds like Congress. I'm not quite sure what you're talking about.
What I'm saying is, if you want to discuss the procedure of what is in place now and changes to it, yes, I am interested in that.
Okay, I think I know what you mean.
I may not be supportive of it, but I am interested in the discussion.
Okay. So, um, maybe at the next meeting, we can discuss this, Holly, at our next, uh, planning commission meeting to find out.
Well, I think that Bruce is not the only one that's got a say in this.
Yeah.
Personally, I think the city has the staffing and the training to handle it. I don't think the planning commission does, with all due respect. Um, I think we should let the professionals do their work. And then we can oversee the result of their work, which is, I think, how we're structured now. I don't think we're, uh, trained enough, nor do I want to sit through workshops to become trained well enough to do a job for a city staff that's already doing it quite well.
Wow. Interesting. Planning commissioner that doesn't want to have extra training. Barbara, are you interested in discussing these projects before it comes to us for final review?
I am. I am. I would like to at least see them.
See them and provide some input?
Yeah.
Robert?
You know, on this last project, we had the north of this project being proposed tonight. Uh, it came in front of us after review and so forth. And we had our shot at it and, and then we took many shots at it. And the developer had to go back and make changes based on what we recommended within the guidelines that we already had set forth. So it came in with the foundation of, you know, baseline where they wanted to go with it. And we just tweaked it to where it met our specifications within our, our, uh, you know, uh, Kingsburg, uh, site plan there. And because of it, we had a lot of changes made to that. I mean, he, he dropped a few units. I think it went from thirty-eight to thirty-five. Uh, we changed elevations, we increased green spaces and so forth. So we do have a lot of leverage to a certain extent in regards to what can be done at that stage when we see it. Um, I'm always open to know more about what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I wouldn't be, you know, I'd be against, you know, going to some workshops and so forth. But, you know, based on what Bruce and, and, uh, Craig is talking about, that there's already, um, a process in place to where they bring it in. If I was going to develop it, I have to have a site plan. Has to meet certain criteria to get past that first wave. And then once they've had a chance to go back and forth with it behind the scenes, then they bring it to us. So we can take a final look at it and, and then kind of tweak it based on what we would like.
No, we're not allowed to tweak it.
But some of the things we, well, if, if it's within our guidelines, because we did tweak that one subdivision.
Yeah, that was a different.
We, we changed it.
Yeah, that was different. He didn't want to deal with the plate, with the site plan review. That's why, you won't see another project like that before the city, before the planning commission.
We did have.
We're not going to get another one like that ever.
Yeah.
That was one in a million. What we're going to get is the final map approved and we won't be allowed to do any tweaking.
Any applicant under the municipal code has the opportunity to appeal the decision of the site plan review and appeal that to the, to the planning commission if they elect to do so. So it's, it's not a situation where, a situation like that would never come before the planning commission again. As Holly's pointed out, with this project, it'll be a planned unit development. There will be conditions of approval. Um, and so, you know, the, it's, every land use entitlement that comes before the planning commission and the city council are subject to both state and, and our municipal code. As to, as to how it's to be presented and how it's to be analyzed and how it's to be determined at public hearing. And so if it comes in as a planned unit development or a conditional use permit, the municipal code identifies what needs to be done through site plan review and staff and then by the planning commission and eventually the city council depending upon what it is. And you have those obligations and opportunities that's set forth in, in the municipal code. But the only way, the other way that you're only going to be able to do that is would be through the change of the process. If you, the commission wants to do that, a majority of commissioners have to put that on the agenda. Just as if it was coming to the city council, we have, it has a majority of the city council that can work on an item such as that on, uh, subsequent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Change of the process. Maybe we can discuss that at our next meeting, the change of the process.
I think research on that.
I think research on that would be useful in advance of that. So.
Good discussion. Okay, um, um, oh, motion to adjourn.
I, I go motion to adjourn. I, I'm in favor, whatever. What are we supposed to do here?
We have a motion. Is there a second to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it.
All right. Meeting's adjourned.
I remember when I was on the planning commission, we would open the, we would get them.